And Jim Berger.
Yes.
What were you going to do tonight besides be here?
I don't know, other than being a retired broadcaster or educator sort of thing. I thought I was just going to listen to you make misstatements all night.
Because we're going to bicycle 100 miles tonight.
No, that's tomorrow.
That's tomorrow. Okay. Well, we're going to all talk about education, of course, tonight. And let me say you all, and of course, we've got the audience and we've got Janay, who's going to be with the audience handling the questions. And Janay is from 104.1 and 95.5. So we've got some tremendous people here tonight to have this discussion with. But, you know, today, I was at the first day of St. Louis Public Schools, amazingly enough, August 5th. We're back in school. Every time I talk to somebody about this, they say, "Wait a second. It's August 5th. Aren't you supposed to go on Labor Day or something?" But of course, we go earlier than we did a long time ago. We talked today about a lot of things in school. And one of the things that we talked about a great deal was data. So, and on and off tonight, I'm sure we're going to get to that. And that is, what is all this data? What do you understand as far as the importance of all of this data in education? Anybody?
Well, when it comes to the data, we're dealing with here in the state of Missouri, the Common Core standards. Many of you probably familiar with the Common Core standards where the data basically determines how effective a child is doing by way of academics, by way of coming to school or not, things of that sorts. So the data is very important. However, we cannot continue to look at the data like No Child Left Behind to determine if a child is really proficient in areas in which they need to be in. Because the No Child Left Behind is what it says. It really left many children behind because we had to deal with, you know, the harsh data that the teachers had to deal with. They basically talked to the test versus actually giving those students what they really needed in order to perform in a global economy.
Yeah. And when we get to the audience and hear some of their comments on this, I really am interested in just how all this data really sort of translates for each individual person here into something that's meaningful for kids.
Yeah. Mark, I think that we're just seeing the beginning of how data will be and can be leveraged. Because if you think about the normal child, and you know, when I came through school, a lot of the panelists, maybe not some of the members of the audience, when they came through. But we would sit in a classroom and we've heard, you know, that class size has a lot to do with, you know, how efficient that classroom can move, how much the kids learn individually and everything else. But the other thing that makes a difference within that classroom is the level that each one of those kids come in at and how much personal attention each one of them needs. And they're starting to really refine the approaches to education through these data points so that they can better target the kids and better begin to put them into classrooms where they can learn and they can thrive and they can grow. So, you know, again, I think we're seeing the beginning of it. I think that we need to collect more data there. I don't see anything bad that can come out of it.
Well, I understand the words that you're saying, and it does make sense. And certainly, we want to know as much as we can about all the kids that we're working with. But I wonder if it gets to a point where the data somehow maybe takes over the importance of that relationship between teacher and student?
No. If used correctly, it'd enhance that relationship and the classrooms themselves would be more efficient. So I think that, again, I don't think we should stray away from it because of the notion that it can be something different.
What do you think, Berger?
Well, data is always very interesting because it depends on who's accumulating the data and what they're trying to do with it. Because sometimes they try to find an answer by, you know, coming up with data that'll support that. You know, and we all know here, the most important thing in this school is the teacher in the classroom. That relationship is more important than any assistant principal, principal, superintendent, anything along the lines. It's the student and the teacher.
Right.
It's bottom up. And if the teacher can get on board with something, if he has, if he's lucky enough to have a class that's pretty much, like you said, that, you know, evened out so he doesn't have to spend almost all of his time with three or four students that are way, way, way behind while the others kind of wait and kind of hang on, you got it made. But we all know that's not the case, particularly in the St. Louis Public Schools where people are moving around all the time, schools from school to school, and sometimes even out to the county and then back into the city. It just gets complicated. It makes a tough situation even harder. I think there's nothing wrong with the data. And Duncan, Arnie Duncan, is really requesting that we do this all at a national level. And I think you're right too, Jamila. It's an important thing right now, especially in light of that No Child Left Behind, which didn't really get off to a good start. And it's really not much farther along now than it was three or four years ago.
And you know what data is showing us right now, that our children are not where they need to be.
Don't we know that without the data?
Yeah, we know that without the data. I mean, we literally have children that are graduating from kindergarten to the 12th grade, not knowing how to read on 3rd grade level.
Absolutely, right.
Okay? And with that being said, if we're not educating them, we're going to incarcerate them. We have children that are graduating out of the high schools, going straight into the colleges, and guess what? They're going into remedial classes. So they're below proficiency in the areas of math and science. So we're not where we need to be, and the data shows that. So the conversation that needs to be had is how do we get to where we need to be? Okay? Right now, in the St. Louis Public Schools, we're provisionally accredited. We haven't been fully accredited in over a decade. And when do we get to a point where we're trying to reach high standards, other than just being mediocre? We have to be able to compete in the global economy, and our children are just not there yet, even with the data that we see each and every day.
Yeah. Well, one of the things that worries me about this whole data thing, and believe me, I'm not against data at all. I mean, I'm working on my PhD right now. I'm concerned about data. But what I'm also concerned about is all the testing that is done constantly compared to what the kids really need, which is what you said, which is the connection with the teacher, the instruction, the education. They need to develop ideas, understanding, learning, thinking. The testing every minute.
We need to teach.
Yeah, we need to teach.
It's the bottom line.
Okay. You were going to say something?
Sure, a couple of things. One, there used to be this old saying, trash in, trash out. They didn't call it trash. But when it came to technology and automation, whatever you put in doesn't necessarily mean if it's crazy what you put in, that means the product that you get on the other end is crazy. If we are using numbers to drive some results as opposed to, and allowing the numbers to dehumanize what we're attempting to do, that creates a problem in and of itself. And the data envelope really needs to also include not only what happens in that classroom, but what happens with those children outside of the classroom, outside of the six or eight hours that they spend in the classroom, because that has a significant impact on the quality of education too. So we need the data, and I think part of the problem is people trying to figure out what to do with the data. They're trying to figure out where to go with it and how to make it work. And we really don't have a one-size-fits-all model, and we never will.
Yeah. Go ahead, go ahead.
And I think, Tim, you just hit on it. It's not just collecting the data. It's, you know, the data being a means to ID a path to reach our ultimate goal where our kids all, you know, achieve more and they're better and they're more successful when they go out into the real world. And we can get there by understanding, you know, what is causing the breakdown. And we cannot figure out what's causing the breakdown without the data. It's like going to a doctor and saying, "I'm sick." And he says, "Okay, what are the symptoms?" "I don't know, I'm sick." "Okay, what are your symptoms?" "I'm sick." You know, but he needs to know the symptoms. He needs to know, okay, it's my chest, it's this and that, with the data. And then he can ID the problem, and he knows what kind of medication to give you. So the same thing here, it's not just the collection of the data. Like Tim said, we have to make sure we have a, you know, end-to-end data collection mechanism where we understand what's happening outside the classroom, what's happening inside the classroom, where this kid is coming from, that kind of thing. And then begin to use that data to create a solution and a path.
Yeah. It might be interesting, by the way, if we had some means of collecting data besides asking teachers to collect the data. In other words, if somebody came in and was evaluating the classroom and collecting data and telling the teacher and the administrators and the political people and everybody else, "Here's what we found out," that's one thing. But when you've got teachers who are supposed to be teaching, who are also at the same time supposed to be collecting data, I can only tell you that I've talked to people at numerous universities who say, "That is ridiculous. You would never have the people who are being evaluated collecting data on themselves."
Yeah. Again, I think that's part of what Tim was talking, we need to, you know, a proper collection mechanism, I think, to be able to collect the data, make sure that we have good data, like Tim was talking about, garbage in, garbage out. We need to make sure that we are getting good data so that when we begin to diagnose this thing and begin to build a roadmap on how to get from here to there, that it is indeed rooted in some truth.
And we do have it. We have the data. We know how the children are doing here in the St. Louis Public Schools. We know that over 80% of those kids are below proficiency. We know that a lot of those children are coming from broken homes that are impoverished. We know that. So the question is, what do we do about it? How do we break the cycle? How do we get to a point where children are at the level in which they need to be on again to compete in the global economy when it comes to math and science? I mean, we can't get away from that. So we have the data. So the question at hand is this here: What do we do now?
Well, and I think that's definitely the question.
How do we get to the point where kids are being educated?
And we've got some people who definitely want to tell us about that. But before they do, I want to bring up one last point on the data. There's a man named David Berliner, and some people here may know his name. He wrote a number of books and did an article recently in The Teacher's College Record where he identified this data. He said, "At the top of all the people in the world, all the students in the world who are learning are the white American students." Now, they might be number two to Finland, but they're up there. And at the bottom of every country in the world is our black and Hispanic students across the United States. Now, there's some data that we can agree, I mean, it's true. And the question is, what are we going to do about it? Because there's something that we're doing as far as withholding resources, I believe, and the Obama administration as well believes it, that that withholding of resources in the inner-city minority communities is affecting data in a way that we're not talking about in the classrooms, but is absolutely huge.
Yeah. And, Mark, I think when we use data in its broader sense, there's microdata and then there's much more broader data. And I think we need to collect both. I think we need to make sure we understand that granular data, what's happening within that classroom with different makeups of students within the classroom all the way through, to be able to solidly diagnose what we need to do to get from where we are today. We know that on a much broader sense, when you look at some of the data that's available today, and, you know, I think that the teachers, they'll tell you this also, that if we start kids out in preschool, it will affect their entire lives downstream. We know that piece of data. They have years of studies to back that up. And if we really want to make a significant change right now to begin to affect the public schools or any school across the state of Missouri, we need to make preschools mandatory. That will begin to right the ship.
That's true. That's an excellent point. I think we have somebody in the audience that can...
Absolutely. Janay with Byron. There you go. Byron from the Teachers Union.
I'm with the American Federation of Teachers, and my hat is working with, in partnership with the district, on expanding pre-K. And that's part of the success story of the St. Louis Public Schools. I'm just back from Washington, DC. Dr. Adams was up there as well. We're a shining example of labor management getting along across the country. But one of the biggest feathers in our collective cap is expanding pre-K. As you said, the data and research shows that, and I'm not talking about for two weeks. We've got 40 years of data, the Abrissar Darian study, the Chicago, and the Perry. Anyone can look these up. It shows that 40 years out, people who had high quality, and you'll notice the president keeps saying that, high-quality pre-K, early childhood, they have better outcomes in terms of graduation, they're less likely to be incarcerated, they have higher income, more likely to go to college, and more likely to be employed, and more likely to have a stable home life, starting with pre-K. And I know that sounds like a long sales list, but I was trained in secondary education, like you, Mark, and to me, it's a surprise, and I'm learning more from pediatricians about brain development. We have a critical time, and the window starts to close around age four. We have to support parents as teachers, we have to support first steps, and we have to start with preschool. And I want to congratulate the superintendent and Richard Gaines for having the foresight to work with us to do that. We increased by 800 seats. The people of St. Louis voted overwhelmingly to support Proposition S. We got the DSEG funding. The first thing the governor did, the first thing he did after the inaugural and he was signed in, he came and had a press conference with our AFT Teacher of the Year and with Superintendent Adams and called for the state to move in that direction. Instead, we're struggling over fully funding the foundation formula, and now we're suffering under this bizarre law that has people transferring all over the place. All that relates back to a misuse of data and No Child Left Behind. There were some good parts of No Child Left Behind, but it really was basically set up to have winners and losers, and we're seeing that now with this transfer case.
And Byron, let me tell you, you've got heads shaking behind you. Everybody is, you know, agreeing, and I am going to agree also. But I also want to say, and I'm a little biased in all of this because of the fact that I teach at high school, but I'm worried about my high school kids too. I mean, obviously, you want to start where you said, but what can we do to focus in a positive way with these older kids who have not had these opportunities? Because we need to do something about that. And I know Carl...
I'm not going to bogart the microphone, but I got to say this.
Okay, but I know Carl right here and then Marlene's about to...
One more thing that we do right is full-service community schools. And educators know about MAS law. You have to start with people feeling secure in their life and having something to eat. That's where you have to start.
Okay. Let's go to Carl first, and then let's go to Marlene.
My name is Carl Peterson. I'm a former president of the Ferguson-Floreson School Board, and my wife is a teacher there. Let's put the rubber where the road is. My wife had a 2nd-grade class in which 24 of the 28 kids could not read at grade level. I had a magnificent conversation with Dr. Karen Ticky, who was the Associate Superintendent for Instruction for the Archdiocese. And what we both agreed on, that my wife needed for a class like that, she needed lower class size, she needed them longer. We have one of the shortest school years in the nation, in the world. She needed preschool, as was just expoused. We need to have kids after school. We need to have special needs teachers because Alderman Reed is so right, that most of those 24 kids do not learn well in group situations. They learn individually. So you have to find out what turns on that child individually. So in these situations, you need all these things to be in place. But quite frankly, that class was 10 years ago. I have been asking everybody, every politician, every person that I come across, "What do you want my wife to do? I have told you, and everybody agrees, these are the things we need." But we have gone from 31st in the nation in funding our schools to 41st in the nation, and we have gone from the state supporting 40% of the cost of education to a miserable 29% of education. We don't have the funding. In Ferguson-Floreson, we've laid off 150 teachers. This will be the third year out of the last 10 that my wife has gotten no raise. And we have, we used to be able to have an extended year for 11 months for the schools that were at the lowest performing, the four lowest performing schools. We had to quit that because of budget cutbacks, and they face an $8 million cutback. So it still gets down to, if you aren't going to fund these things that we need, what is it you want my wife to do?
Marlene.
Yes?
No, you had a question, and Janay's going to come and get you. Okay.
Thank you very much. The first thing I want to say is, I want to congratulate the St. Louis Public Schools for the work that they have done, most especially the last four years, because they have made a difference. And a lot of it had to do with the unions sitting at the table and everybody agreeing that the most important thing was to improve the opportunities for young people. Everything that you have mentioned about data is true as far as it could be good or bad, depending on how you use it. It was used for good when I was on the school board. We created a research department, and as you know, Mark, at that time, there were other people going around helping to collect the data and process the data. You didn't have to do it. And it made a difference in how we could apply for funds. We knew how to target each child for every specific that they were lacking in. That's important for the child. Knowing this, you've brought back some old tools that we knew worked pre-K. We knew it worked. It was torn down out of the school system through that maze of 10 superintendents and all the nonsense that was created in order to promote charter schools. Well, now, we're back on the right track. And you have a good superintendent, you have a good SAB board, everybody's working together, community is working together, so you're on the right track. I know that you are now, and I want to congratulate Richard Gaines and the board because they're going to bring tutoring back into the schools. There's no reason to ship a child out somewhere on a bus to get tutoring. You can pay your own teachers to provide the tutoring. It can be done right there on site. The child can get more time on tutoring and get everything that they need right at school. That's a huge plus for this school district, just huge. So as we're moving forward in these few years now, we know what works. We're going back to some of the old ways of doing business and bringing this school district back to where it needs to be. And I'm going to be there beside them, and that's the other problem. If the community is not there, it still can't succeed 100% or even 90%. So I have challenged a lot of my friends to come in and volunteer at least one hour. And you can give up one hour. So come in and volunteer for at least one hour. But give them their due and stop pretending as though private education is the best because you have a foundation of public education in this city that's 160 years old that can't compare to anything else.
Okay. We're going to take a quick break, and then after that, we'll be right back. Okay, we're going to take a quick break, and then after that, we'll be right back. Welcome back. I'm Mark Kason. This is the STL TV Education Town Hall Meeting. And Richard Gaines, I've been dying to get to you because a lot of people have been talking here so far, and I'd like to get some of your feelings about what you've heard.
Mostly, they're all positive. One thing that I think people need to truly understand about education, everyone seems to be looking for a silver bullet. Somebody's going to do one thing that's going to change everything. That does not happen. William Danforth made a statement when we were impaneled to effectively control the St. Louis Public Schools that it would take 10 years for anything to be seen at all in terms of positive outcomes. Time on task has not changed. If children don't spend enough time on task, there will be no educational growth. The gentleman here in the front, who is, I think, a superintendent or a former superintendent in Ferguson-Floreson, mentioned something about the notion of after school participation, things of that nature. You had an alderman here saying the same thing. There's one thing that's consistent about education. The more it's presented, the better it is basically able to be installed. We've just started a program with the help of the litigants from the Minnella Dale suit in the 1980s, where we've received $94 million. That's the reason that we now have childcare centers throughout the city of St. Louis. I was personally involved in negotiating that. I knew the importance of it because I was also involved in sending it forward in the 80s. You have to have money. You cannot make this happen without funds. But you must, we must continue to deal with time on task. Data collection is fine. We have been rated as having the best data collection in this state from the standpoint of St. Louis Public Schools in the last 20-something years. What does it matter? Doesn't matter at all. You know, you get, you can get something that says your attendance rates are good. If you use that properly, you know that the child's attendance rates are not as good as corner hands. So you can try and adjust that and balance it. You can talk about what the academics saw in academics relative to math and reading. All of that's fine. We know that changes because children have more time, when they have more time, to study mathematics. You know, charter schools are given something we're not given. There's one, and I will not name it, because we're involved in some, some sort of negotiations with them now, all of which I do not agree with, because I don't think any resources from St. Louis Public Schools should be spent anywhere other than children that attend St. Louis Public Schools. But one thing they do, which is simple, it has nothing to do with all of the, the pedagogy that you hear. It is very simple. They extend the school day. They allow children to go to school on weekends because that's what's needed. It's purely a matter of time on task. The notion of the teachers in the classrooms, some of us have fought the notion of teachers having to collect data, having to sit in situations where, you know, we have a, a structure that I've been totally against, where teachers every six weeks do testing. So you think about these state tests. Teachers every six weeks have to do a test in terms of what has been the growth of the child. Then they have to submit that test for it to be reviewed, and recommendations to come back, and then they have to determine where the classrooms are. Why would we be doing that? For years, education worked because teachers knew where their children were. They did not have to have these instruments from outside. We do no longer have the luxury of being able to go to teacher educational institutions and grab the best teachers, to grab the best trained, because folks do not go into that profession anymore. They do not go because they've been beat down, they don't make enough, and everything you hear is about what they do not do. There are a whole lot of things that are necessary for education to truly work, but one of the very basic ones is giving more time for teachers, or as we call it, for teachers and learners to be in the process of education. Without that, all the rest of this stuff is a bunch of bull, to be bluntly honest with you.
I'd like to argue with just one thing that you said, Richard, and, and you mentioned about how much money the teachers make. And I, I'll admit, I mean, every teacher wants to make some more money. No, everybody that does anything wants to make some more money. But the truth is, and I think you've probably come into contact with this, there are a lot of teachers out here who would actually take less money if we were doing more of what you just described to me in the classroom and got rid of a lot of that crazy stuff that comes from Washington DC and everywhere else as far as telling people what they have to do, as far as the testing and the multiple choice and all the rest. So, I mean, do you think that's true?
Mark is absolutely the, the right answer to that one. All you have to look is, is at Catholic institutions, Catholic schools. The teachers don't make anywhere near what public education teachers make, but they also don't have to deal with the other problem that, that public school teachers have to deal with. See, the assumption that you cannot expel a child forever. Most people believe that that's the case. You cannot get rid of these kids in public schools. I'm here to tell you, I'm fighting against that. When a child shows they will not learn, not that they cannot learn, that they will not learn and they will be disruptive, they should be put out. I don't mind saying it. Because when you talk about what a teacher's having to put too much time is with those children who choose to come and choose not to learn. Those who have problems learning, we need to understand and learn how to direct resources to them as best we can. But those who choose not to, they need to be put out of St. Louis Public Schools. Now, the senator there has worked with a, an initiative, and she's actually started the initiative, that we use now where children are brought back into the schools. And she can tell you more about that than anybody in the state because she created it. And it basically gets kids who've been put out of school because, or left school for their own reasons, and they're brought back and they're worked with all the way until age 20, I think it's 21 or 22, until they get a GED or they get something that allows them to pursue either a job, a training, or, or further education. Yeah, you're right. I won't say, because Byron would jump up and down and yell and scream like crazy if I said that St. Louis teachers or any teachers didn't make enough, that made too much money. No teacher's going to admit to that. But I would say to you, when a kid comes out of, out of business school, regardless of the college, and their starting salary on average is about $66,000 to $67,000 a year, and, and a person comes out of the educational institution to teach, and their starting salary is in the 30s, in the better places, there is, there's a disconnect there. Where do you go if you're a man and you want to, and you want to raise a family? Most of our male teachers cannot afford to continue teaching if they have families. They have to be, try and become principals or administrators, because the teacher's salary does not support it. You have to remember that teachers in our society were basically considered to be women, and it was considered to be secondary jobs. You know, it was only in 1954 that women teachers in St. Louis Public Schools get even married. Did you know that?
Yeah, I do. Thank you very much. Jamila, you want to comment?
Yeah, I mean, he's absolutely correct with everything that he said. And he talked a little bit about a program that I started in 2007. When I first got elected, we had 12,000 children that had literally dropped out of the system. Now, imagine 12,000 kids going down King's Highway. I mean, that was an epidemic. And so I went to Dr. Borisaw, and I, I said, "Look, I have a concept. I want to go after those kids the same way I got elected. Let's knock on the doors and let's make phone calls." She said, "If you can do that, we will open up Turner Middle School." She said, "I'll give you a list of numbers that you can call." So we did a test. The first number we called, the guy grandmother answered the phone, and she said that if you would have called a week earlier, you could have saved his life. He's dead now by way of a drive-by shooting. At that point, we knew that what we needed to do in terms of bringing those kids back. You're talking those children that dropped out of the system and those that were pushed out of the system because they, they were, they fell too far behind in their credits. The first year, we brought in 45 kids. The second year, we brought in 80-something kids. This year, we graduated, and, and you can speak to it. We graduated approximately over 180 kids that wasn't doing any things with, with their lives. And I truly believe that that works. Fresh Start is really working for the St. Louis Public Schools. And you don't hear a lot of hoopla about it, but we're taking kids that would usually be out on the streets because they fell too far behind in their credits, to the extent where they had to be pushed out. They can now go to Fresh Start and go at their own pace, and they're graduating. They're going into, into community colleges. They're going into Rankin Tech with the partnership of the St. Louis Public Schools and Rankin Tech, getting skills that they need to be able to be productive out here. Those are the type of outside of the bots thinking concepts that we need to continue to implement here in the St. Louis Public Schools. I have a very serious problem with social promotions. I don't think that children should graduate from the second grade knowing that they're on the first grade level and go to the fourth grade. I think that we're setting them up for failure. I think that we need to begin to look at how we can deal with social promotion starting at third grade. If a child is not performing at third grade, please, please don't push them on knowing that they're not fit for the next level, because you will set them up for failure. A lot of people say, "Well, if you don't, if you hold them back at eighth grade, ninth grade, they're going to drop out eventually." We're not talking about eighth to ninth grade. We're talking about holding that kid back at third grade so that they can get the skills that they need to move to the next level. Social promotions is something that needs to stop, and it's a massive issue that no one's really looking at and talking about.
Yeah. And it's a problem if you're just moving kids on. But the other side is, is that if you take all the kids, if, like, you look at that data that I talked about earlier as far as the, the white students who are at the top of the world and the black students who are at the bottom, and, and you're going to say, "Well, let's just hold all these blacks." I know that's not what you're saying, but I'm just saying, if you do that, you would have an enormous problem for those kids. So wouldn't you possibly have something in the middle where you could move them forward and yet deal with their, their remedial issues?
Well, no, you, you put, you put a mechanism in place, and that's a bill that I've been working on for the last two years, well, actually, three years. It's called the Every Children Can Learn Act, okay? If you, we know that a child is not on grade level, then we have to put mechanisms in place. One, we have to have some in-school tutoring, and that's why I was able to put $300,000 in the budget, not just last year, but this year, to give free tutoring to kids at no cost to their parents in the areas of math and science. I put $300,000 in the budget. We just received it last month from DESI. Those are the type of things that we need. We need the tutoring, we need the after-school program, and then we need to test them and see where they are before they go to the next level. And if they're not ready after all of that, you hold them back. But you have to put mechanisms in place in order to get them to where they need to be. And we cannot continue to pass these kids on knowing that they're not fit, because again, if we don't educate them, we're going to incarcerate them. And every kid that you know out here reaping havoc in the city of St. Louis with the murders, with the break-ins, all of those kids, nine times out of 10 are dropouts. 80% of the kids that are incarcerated are illiterate. Okay? So we have a very serious problem that we need to deal with, and the only way we're going to deal with it, we have to begin to think about how we deal with the poverty level. Poverty is a massive, a direct correlation to dropout. It's a direct correlation to lack of education. We know children that are coming from their homes, and they're not getting the brain foods that they need. So what do we have to do? We have to begin to look at all of that, because that's going to impact that kid's learning ability when they go into the classroom.
You said some really important things here.
So what we need, okay.
Okay, I want to come back to it in a second, but we've got a question out here in the audience. Go, go right ahead, Janay.
What's your name?
Kwame Mensah. I'm with Bridgeway Behavioral Health. I'm a reentry manager. I want to applaud what Sister Nashid is doing. What, basically what she's doing is disruption, disrupting the prison-to-school pipeline. And that's what I see as an educator in St. Louis, in the St. Louis County Jail. That's where I teach. And I, but I wanted to ask, what is, what are we doing more to do that? That seems like one, not everybody's on board with that being a, a, a game changer. So in, in St. Louis Public School, in the St. Louis Public School system, as administrators, support staff or whatever, what are we doing to disrupt that? The tolerance level of predominantly our young black men is so low that they, they're thrown into that track easy, you know, kind of easily by, by teachers who are just not trained on classroom management. And that's what I see in St. Louis County, where they come to, they come to me, you know, I've taught in the city a while, I know what's going on, and they, and they kind of get it, you know, that...
Well, Kwame, you, you mentioned classroom management, and that's something, that's a buzzword that everybody uses. But the problem is, is that a lot of times, people, when they say classroom management, what they mean is, how do we get compliance? And, well, you're shaking your head, but there may be a problem with compliant, with asking for compliance only, because maybe there's something more that needs to happen in terms of relationships that gives students a chance to express themselves and, and to actually be dissidents if they want to.
Absolutely. And what I've seen is, I've seen, I've seen a lot of teachers come into a setting in which they may have stopped, student taught somewhere else, but then end, when they come to a school, they have a new set of challenges. And if we could grow our own, that might be a solution to it. You know, classroom management is one of the, it's a skill. And if we're not building that, then we're going to do more of the same.
What do you think, guys?
I, I, look, I wanted to hear from Richard Gaines back there real quick, because he's been raising his...
Richard, you got more?
He's, he was trying to jump out of his chair a minute ago.
Go ahead.
I have two points without talking too much about this.
Hang on, let's get you a mic. Here we go.
This gentleman talks about crisis intervention. This school system for years has subcontracted out bad students, and it's almost like sending them to jail. They're given three months away from the school setting. They learn nothing. But after they do their time, they, they basically are allowed to come back in. For the first time in almost 15 years, this school system is working with, quote, and I don't want to hear Byron to hear this, because I don't want to be at the bargaining table with him. But we're working with an, a serp, we're working with a balanced budget. This school system has not had that in at least 15 years. We actually have an excess of over $10 million. Now, one of the fights I have is trying to force those monies into areas that address the problems of the lower performing students, where we get these kids into programs or we bring people in resources with people who are trained to do this. You can't teach, you can't get the entire teaching staff to become, shall we say, specialists in terms of special education programs. But we don't need to do them the way they've been being done, with children just simply warehoused. Now, you also mentioned training those people with classroom management. Byron would admit to this, because we did this for the first time in this city. We now have a peer review program, where every freshman teacher that comes into this school system today has a consulting teacher. That consulting teacher is a teacher who's been proven to know how to teach inner-city kids. They work with that teacher for the entire first semester. If the teacher does not pan out, I want you to hear this, they are recommended not to be hired or not to be kept in the school system. We only, we meaning the administration, only has four votes. The union has five. The union has basically called for, what is it, 25, 20, 25 teachers not to be retained because they could not teach. Now, I want you to understand, this is the first time in almost 35 years that anything like this has happened in the schools. The senator there has ranted and raved, rightfully so, about bad teachers. We are retraining new teachers, showing them how to work in urban areas, and the next hurdle is to deal with these teachers who are tenured, who are not performing, and who are now being called out, because if they're not called out and their classes are not working, the principals are getting fired. We fired 19 principals the year before last, and they were fired because their schools did not progress. The federal government required us to replace something on the order of 20 additional teachers' principals last year, and to change 50% of their staff in schools that were not performing under a CIG program. What I'm saying to you is that when you talk about the need, we have a real need for black men in these schools. We have a real need for that, and we don't have enough. But, so we don't have them in the schools because they don't meet the educational requirements. You know, you got a person with a PhD in physics, and he can't teach the St. Louis Public Schools in terms of math, of, of, of just basic science. So what we're doing is, we have to construct ways to basically take these children and put them in environments where they can be successful. And that means releasing some of the notions about how education in urban America has to be taught. You know, we got too many people running around making money. I don't get paid. I might be the only person in here that don't get paid. But we don't, we have to stop all of these people that come up with these programs that get sold. Everybody now is talking about how do we release, how do we change the, the achievement gap? Nobody knows how to do it, other than time on task. But you got folks running all around the state, being paid because they're going to show you how to do it. Black Leadership Roundtable tried to attack that eight years ago. Didn't work. There is no systematic silver bullet for doing that. But you're right. We're trying to do some of it with limited funds. The reason I'm saying this on TV is because I want my cohorts to hear it. I'm fighting like hell to see that some of the monies that have been basically saved are pushed towards experimental programs like Upward Bound, Internal to the Schools, and Sapphia House. I don't know if you would be old enough to remember Sapphia House. Sapphia House, that's a Greek word for wisdom. It came out of North St. Louis, and for 10 years, Al Chappelle, whose daughter now is a state senator, ran that program. And that program did the same thing as Upward Bound, found the worst kids, just like Jimmy Edwards is doing, found the worst kids, put them in situations, and had them learn values. We have children growing up who are amoral, not immoral, amoral. Now, you cannot change discipline for an amoral personality. You can change it for an immoral person. That's a person who understands right and wrong, but chooses to do wrong. An amoral person does not have that center, that moral center. That's the kind of issues that are truly bedrocking this school system and the candidates have to be... That's the kind of issues that are truly bedrocking this school system and the kinds that have to be addressed. And it will not be addressed through traditional education.
Thank you, Richard.
I'm going to sit down before these people try to talk.
No, no, that's okay. Now, before we go somewhere else, I'd like you, Janay, if you come back around the other side. I'd like to ask a couple of questions to my students here. And I've got here in the studio, and I'm so pleased to have, we've been all day talking about the Williams sisters being here, but they are. And they are Naporsia and Namiya and Ashala. And Naporsia just graduated from Roosevelt. She is a phenomenal student, I can tell you, and she's on her way to college. Naporsia, can you talk for a minute just a little bit about just what's schools like at St. Louis Public where you were?
Well, attending Roosevelt for four years since my freshman year, it's been different. I guess it's different, like, depending on what teacher or what classroom I'm in. The students tend to, I guess, test the teacher's patience. Depending on, I guess, they go according like how the teacher acts. So if the teacher is like strict, they know, come in class, sit down, do your work, do what you need to do. If the teacher's too nice, they'll run all over you, not do their work. It's just different. It's pretty rowdy during class time. Discussions and things like that, the students don't really go along with it.
How did that affect you?
I mean, I guess I wouldn't learn as much as I could possibly have learned in my classrooms. I could have learned way more during class time. But with the kids not listening, going crazy, talking, nobody wanted to learn. So it basically, I didn't, you know, get as much as I could have gotten out of being in high school my four years.
Well, as a parent, excuse me for just jumping in. As a parent of a child who went to school right around the corner from Roosevelt, I'm at a loss to understand how an administration could allow that to continue on. Are we just warehousing kids for the benefit or financial benefit? Or are those issues being addressed? And those issues just didn't start today or yesterday or four years ago when you first attended Roosevelt. These are long-term problems. And so as a parent, there's a certain level of frustration and willingness to walk away either to a charter school or to a private school, or in cases of St. Louis County, people get on the bus. And is that your primary objective? Is that what you want your child to do? No, my preference would be to have my child go to a school that's part of our neighborhood, part of our immediate community. But when you've got a cancer that's infecting that institution and it affects the kids who really want to learn, ability to learn, how do we do that? Even good students that come out of those institutions are impacted to the degree that they can't be as competitive because the learning environment was not as nurturing and as positive.
And that's why I commend Mr. Gaines as well as the St. Louis Public School for the professional development that they're trying to cultivate. Because without a good teacher, it's going to be chaotic. And you just heard it. If you don't have a good teacher that can really deal with the ill elements that come in the door every single day with those children, then no one will learn. She says she could have learned more.
But that's a systemic issue there.
And also a principle and a system that supports that.
Right.
So that we can make sure we're weeding the kids out.
But she was there for four years. She was there for four years. That chaos was there from day one. Okay, so there needs to, as a parent, you have to ask questions. Why is this continuing to go on?
And I don't think it's going to, I don't think we're going to continue to see that because we just passed a bill, okay? Actually, I just passed a bill, Senate Bill 125, where you can get rid of bad teachers early. Throughout the state, we have 521 districts. The city of St. Louis was the only school district where it took 90 days to start the process of getting rid of a bad teacher. Now, we're on the same level playing field as every other district throughout the state of Missouri. So we're on the road to success when it comes to looking at the teacher's performance and seeing if they're fit to be in those classrooms to teach those kids that's coming in the doors with those ill elements.
First thing, I want to commend the senator for her drop-back-in program. I think that was a phenomenal program. I was there when you started and that. It's that kind of thing that we need. We need people to engage in all levels. And she talked about, you know, some of the things that impact the child, you know, when they're out of school. I think that we need to watch how much pressure we put on the teacher to have the magic wand. I mean, some of these kids come into the classrooms broken, right? So we need to figure, we need to figure out what are we going to do with them? Because they're going to be with, in the school, a certain number of hours a day. You heard Mr. Gaines talk about just getting them out of school. So we're looking, I think that we need to look at various different ways to begin to manage that. Because if you hear from the young lady here, it has impacted her education. Although she's going on, she's going to be successful. But we cannot say that that is true about every child that comes into that school and comes into that situation. They may need that personal one-on-one attention that they're not getting from the teacher because they're being distracted with the things that are happening within the classroom. Just to sum that up and wrap it up, everything from, you know, the income that the family's making, whether the parent is a single-family home or multifamily home, what the child is eating before they come to school, are they wired up on carbs and sugars? All of these types of things will impact how that child engages in school. Along with, you know, preschool and getting that social interaction and being in that structure earlier helps them downstream.
Yeah. And we're heading for a break here in a second. But before we get there, and you mentioned a little bit about food, and it's been mentioned a few times here. And so let's get, I'm going to set something out here that we can talk about when we come back from the break. You know, at Vashon, where I teach right now, at Roosevelt, where I taught before, and at Beaumont, where I taught before that, kids run around during the day arguing, fighting, not fighting in a mean way, but wanting potato chips, okay? That's what they want. They want every, now, that's what they want because that's what's there, okay? I mean, they're not, they'd be fighting over sausage and eggs if somebody was feeding them that, but they're not. They've got chips. And here's what I want to know, because you think about all of our lives, all of our professional lives, could we walk around all day and do what we have to do, be productive, if we were eating potato chips? And could we, could we go all day? Would we go to conferences and be satisfied if they didn't feed us and they didn't give us breaks? I mean, think about it.
I think that's something that we need to talk about after the break. Because the whole poverty issue plays a major role in kids, the ability of kids to learn.
Well, I think so.
And when you have, and when you have children, the only thing that they had was ramen noodles or a hot dog before they got, before they came to school or after they leave school, then that's not brain food. I mean, a kid needs brain food in order for their brains to function.
Okay, so let's take a break, and then we'll be right back, and we'll talk about the brain food. We'll be right back. We're back at the STLTV Education Town Hall meeting. Yes, Jamila, go ahead.
So we were talking about brain food and how children are lacking the nutrition that's needed in order for them to really function in a way, in a level in which they can comprehend math, reading, and science.
And I got to stop you one second, and I just want to say, I have to eat during the day too. But go, I mean, all of us do. All of us do. Seriously, but go ahead.
Imagine going to school, haven't had anything to eat all day, and you want that kid to focus.
Absolutely.
I mean, it's not going to happen. So what I think needs to happen, I think that we need to begin to think outside of the box, take approaches where, if we know that that's happening, we know that those kids are on free and reduced lunch. We know that they're below poverty. We know that the parent, the average 15-year-old kid, mother may be 30 years old, and she's probably smoking weed and giving them hot dogs and ramen noodles for dinner. Why can't we create food pantries within the schools? Where kids can take food home, nutritional food home, and eat while they're at home? I mean, I think that those are the type of out-of-the-box thinking that we need. When it comes to parental involvement, why can't we have GED satellites inside the middle schools where kids can be with their parents while the parents are working on their GEDs? We have to begin to start thinking outside of the box if we want to really change the face of education here in the city of St. Louis.
And I want to say this, Jamila, and then we're going to the audience. I was at a program at Wells Fargo this summer. And we were all sitting around talking about this, this problem. And everybody in the room was eating and drinking. And we were saying, you know, if we're doing this, why would we expect students to do anything differently? I mean, they've got less attention than we all do, and we're going to eat and drink at every conference that we go to. You can't name one that you've been to where you don't.
I'm hungry right now, and I'm getting a little frustrated.
That's right.
The problem is even more complex because you're dealing with some parents, you know, they're not feeding their kids the right food because, you know, because they want to. They're feeding it because some of them can't afford to, and they know the better thing to do. Some of them are feeding them the wrong foods because they don't know any better. And so there's all kinds of things that have to come and play there. I think we need to, if part of this, at the end of the day, is getting into the household and beginning to change what's happening within that environment. And we know some of those things that we can do. They've been done in other cities.
And I agree with you, but I'm just saying this. During the day is, and you eat well. During the day, do you ever get hungry?
Oh, I'm hungry right now.
Okay, there, okay. But you see, and this is my point. Because you take a bunch of kids who don't eat as well as we all do, and you get them hungry, and then tell me what kind of focus you're going to get.
Well, not only that.
Earlier, he talked about the symptoms of being sick. All these things are part of the symptoms. A bad neighborhood is part of the symptoms. Crime in a neighborhood, drugs in a neighborhood, not affordable, safe, clean housing is part of the symptoms. Bad health care or no health care is part of the symptom. Meld nutrition is part of the system. And we have to take a holistic approach to this. It's great to talk about education and what goes on in the classroom and what goes on with the students as well as the administration, but everybody has to be involved. The administration of the city has to be involved. The county executives have to be involved. The governor has to be involved. We have to take a holistic approach. We cannot have geographic boundaries. We cannot have all these crazy lines where we can't help you because that's education and I'm administration. We have to work on this together.
David Jackson.
I think that's a good leeway into what I was sitting back here, listening to everyone even from the start, that it all comes back to the child. I'm, for one, that don't believe in putting a child out of school. I used to travel down Natural Bridge Pass, Beaumont, in the mornings, and I used to see 10, 15, 20 kids out in front of Beaumont when they should be in the school. So I happened just to get out of the car and question why they were not in school. They said that they couldn't get in because they was late and they had to have a parent. Well, I talked to Dr. Adams, and that changed. The other issue is, when you have a problem, a child that acts up in school because of the one strike you out now with the teachers' union, there's a lot of suspensions in school. Once you suspend a child, you've lost that child. And most of the suspensions last 10 days. That's horrendous. The school district does not follow up with that child. So that child is just out there doing whatever. The, one of the points that the Board of Education tried to make when Dr. Burso was here is, we wanted to educate the whole child. We wanted to go into that child's home, find out why that child came to school with an attitude that he didn't want to learn that day. There's a reason he did that. Most of the kids are good kids. They make good grades. But something at home happened that transferred that child into a bad child for that day.
Okay, let me run that back to Richard Gaines for a second. I know, Richard, you're dying to say something here.
Go ahead, Richard. That response is not wholly true. You know, in-house suspensions were basically created in the last two years because of the severe number of children who were being put out of the schools. So now they're kept in schools. We have a woman by the name of Bertha Gilkey who has now three schools. She's had six. And what we have created was parent centers in those schools as a trial to see how we can keep kids who have basically done what they were not supposed to do from being sent out of school. Now, let me tell you something else. And the state legislature, be aware of this, if these kids are sent out of school, monies follow the children, and it follows attendance. The schools are hurting themselves when they don't find ways. But we will not, and I don't change that. I understand what Mr. Jackson says. I respect Mr. Jackson. But I totally disagree with the notion that all children need to be in St. Louis Public Schools. St. Louis Public Schools is not equipped to handle all children. Some children need things that we cannot provide for them.
Okay, Freeman Senior, you look like you're about to jump out of this place. Come on, I know you've got something to say. Janay, if you can get.
Basically, what my thoughts are, and that is, we have babies raising babies. We're going to have to start way down there. Because if you think you're going to solve that problem that we have now in the public school system and the educational system with the kids that we got now, our teenagers, you're missing it. You're going to have to work with them. You can't get rid of them because they're there. But you've got to start with those children that are, before they start having these children. And when they get to be 14, 15, 16 years old, by the time that child gets five years old, here they are, 18 or 19, what do they know about raising a child? They get welfare, and the next thing you know, they put the child out to play rather than help them with that homework and help them with that education so they can be with their boyfriend. So what we need to do is to get started way down there before these children have these children to begin to talk to them about the importance of education and what it is they need to do to make sure that their child does not follow in their footsteps.
Okay, thank you, Freeman. Janay, if I can run you down up in front here. I've got Josh Peters, who is the new representative in the 76th District, who went to Beaumont High School when I was at... representative in the 76th District, who went to Beaumont High School when I was at Beaumont High School. Josh, I know you've got something to say about what's going on here. Tell us about your experience and what you've seen.
Absolutely, Mark, and I just wanna say thank you for having me here this evening. And I think it's a good idea, a good notion for us to be having this conversation on education. I'm a 2006 Beaumont High School graduate, you were one of my teachers, you know this. The community is one of the issues that we have, but it's what we have. I'm the first generation to graduate from high school, first one to go off to college and earn a college degree, but I'm back in St. Louis. I wanna say that I recall when I would show up late at Beaumont High School, I was one of those students who had to sit outside of the door and wait until my parents showed up, if she showed up. I would have to sit out and wait for an adult and beg that adult, "Take me in, say that you're my mom, say that you're my dad," just to get through the doors. There's always gonna be, I'm gonna say this, and I'm jumping off the Richter scale here, but I believe that corporal punishment should be included back into schools. I remember my grandfather...
Yeah, you're jumping.
My grandfather telling me stories that you used to get the hat put on you if you were disobedient. Nowadays, there's no recourse for correcting bad behavior. And I think that's something that we need to start discussing when we look at St. Louis Public Schools. Throwing money at a situation is not gonna fix the issue. I worked for Secretary Arne Duncan at the White House, we worked on these issues. Race to the Top was a priority of the President, and it is a priority of the President, and those are things that we need to start looking at. Some of the ideas that Senator Nishid has thrown out there, some of the things that she's worked on are the future. We have to look outside of the box. Our St. Louis Public School System has been here since the beginning of our city, and times are changing. We have to look at other innovative ways.
Janay, if you would take that microphone right back to Bill for a second, and I said a second, Bill, not an hour.
He could be talking to Richard Gaines. And I'm glad he stayed, 'cause, you know, I've been with the district for 16 years, and I have developed some silver bullets, I've got four of them. You need to be committed to no child not reading at grade level by third grade. If you're not willing to front-load the system, it starts in the home, and Karen Kalish has a program to teach parents to read to their children 15 minutes a day.
Homework.
You know that in pre-K, which ones are behind. If you're not committed to front-loading, the 60% who aren't reading at grade level in third grade have no chance. You don't have the resources to help them catch up. Second of all, you need to get parents more involved, and I've been proposing a bill for a long time, my sister Jamila, to require companies to let parents off from work three hours a month if they go into the schools and visit their kids, and they should get tax credits for the time the employees are off. And people who wanna go in and tutor other people's kids should have the same three hours and get the same tax credits. Third is for those students who are older, you need an initiative with the business community. You need to start in eighth grade, summer jobs, school year jobs, tutoring, mentoring, a promise of a job after graduation or money for college if they stay in school and get the skills they need to compete on the level playing field. It's called a longitudinal relationship with a caring adult. Those companies should get tax credits too. The St. Louis Growth Association is starting an initiative on preparing students for college and students in college that I hope that will be a part of. And finally, back in the mid-'90s, Larry Hutchins at the alternative high school had computer-based learning where kids are on a computer, now they could be on a tablet. McGraw-Hill would pilot a program where if you're learning at your own speed, it doesn't replace teachers, it supplements teachers in math and language arts, so, 'cause everyone's at a different level, and when you miss a question, you go back to where you needed to learn what you missed not to answer that question. He had kids doing three grade levels of achievement in one year, and I think that's the secret to getting kids who are behind to catch up.
Yeah, and the next thing you're gonna tell us, Hawes, is you went to Harvard. Sit down. You were gonna say something.
Yeah, I was, and I'm going to go right back to an issue I raised earlier. As a parent, and we look at, the number-one way, the number-one way people vote is with their feet. And people that have school-aged children oftentimes make the choice to vote with their feet. Outside of that, they choose, they engage in school choice. Either they keep their kid at one particular school, or they put it in a private institution, or they put it in a charter school. We have to have solutions for those parents, we have to have reasons for them to stay. We need to give them something. It's unrealistic to think that this young lady can wait for four years for the school system to get better before she starts her freshman year. That's not gonna happen. So we need to find a way to offer solace or comfort for those parents. Some of us don't have that choice, or some of us don't have that patience, some of us have the opportunity and the ability to spend money or to make other choices, but we have to be able to capture this audience and keep it. Our kids, our school system is the canary in the cave, in the mine. As the school system goes, so goes our community. If we don't find a way of saving our school systems, we're gonna lose this community, people are gonna go other places, and we have got to see that happen.
And I truly believe that all children... I don't think that, I mean, you have some that may have to go through that whole IEP situation, but children can learn, and I think that what they're lacking is TLC, that tender love and care. When you have a parent or a teacher that talks to that kid and that child and tell them that they can learn and that they are something, we don't, our children are so hopeless right now. They don't believe that they can learn, they don't believe that they're gonna live past 18. We have to instill in those children that we care. And many of them come in with a shield, they go into the schools with a shield that it takes a long time to penetrate, but we cannot give up on them. We have to let those children know that we love them, we care about them, and we want them to learn. And I guarantee you, when you have teachers like that, those children tend to latch on to those teachers because they're not getting that type of treatment at home. What they're getting at home is you're gonna be just like your daddy, in jail, you're no good, low down for nothing, that's what they hear. So when you have that teacher that truly understands what it takes and how to penetrate that kid, you can turn that kid around. I was one of those kids, okay? And I truly know.
Before I go back to the audience, do you two have something?
Well, I think that we, well, number one, we've hit on a lot of things tonight, and I really appreciate you having the show, and I appreciate the audience showing up and engaging in the discussions tonight. We know that a portion of these problems can be fixed within the classroom, within the schools, a portion of it is at home, and I don't think that you can leave any of it out. And I know we've said this once tonight, I wanna make sure that before we end tonight, that we make sure to put a capstone on that. If you're a child and you're coming to school, and if you're not prepared so that learning can take root within you by having a good meal, by, you know, having a proper rest and being able to go in the classroom and behave appropriately, learning isn't gonna take root within you. If we're failing on the community side to provide an environment so that that family can really truly sustain itself, and they're not, you know, they're not up at night because of gunshots, their car hasn't been stolen, so that now the mother has to catch the bus to get the kid to school, and all these things, we're gonna continue to spiral out of control. I know you remember Peabody School and what the principal did there, Ms. Reed. I thought she did a phenomenal job. She took that school from the bottom of the heap all across the state of Missouri to one of the top-performing schools back when she did it. How did she do it? She stood out in front of the school each day, she shook every kid's hand as they came into school, and she knew who didn't come. She'd go right, walk right across the street to the projects and knock on the parents' door and say, "Why isn't your child in school?" And she would get this kid to school and get them into the classroom. The last thing she did, she said, "You're not, you cannot be suspended from our school. You do something bad enough where you should be suspended, I'll see you Saturday with your parents in school." And she began to do those things, thinking outside the box, like you said, Senator, and began to create an environment where learning could indeed take root within those children.
Tender love and care.
Before I come back here again, and before I go to Carl here, Namia, Namia Williams, you had something you wanted to say, can you?
I just personally feel like they need a lot of support. Like, the kids, they don't be having a lot of support. So I feel like the reason they act their way in school and don't really participate and be engaged in school is because, like, previous things that happened, like, in their neighborhood or their family members, like, you know, having graduated or in jail. I have to definitely agree with Senator Nishid, they not, they don't have a lot of support. So they just feel like, "I'm not gonna do it, I'm not gonna be participating in school, not going to school." They're just not really, you know, don't have a lot of support, so they just don't really care. And I feel like a lot of kids get distracted when they see somebody else doing something they can't really learn. And it's a lot of teachers that don't, that pretend like they don't, if they don't help and care for the kids, then they just not gonna really be into it.
Okay, thank you. Carl.
One of my friends, Representative Jill Schwoop, and she said to me earlier that she was gonna scream the next time somebody said that money wasn't that important. Money is important, all of those things that I said that my wife really needs. What somebody, when they say that money isn't that important, they're saying, "Ah, class size, no big deal, like the time in school, nah, not so much, special needs, ah, we don't need them." No, you need them. It would take $1.4 billion a year to bring us up to just average, national average. Mitt Romney said that Massachusetts was number one at two of the debates. He's right, Massachusetts is number one in education. They spend $6,000 a student more than we do, 60% more. Money is important, and I'm the only one that I think has talked about it here. How can we not talk about the money? You keep my wife, who has now gone on to be a gifted teacher, she just got out of that, but you put teachers in that situation, you've condemned them to failure. And until you get the class size, the superintendent that was, when I was on the school board, said this, "We are not serious about at-risk children until class size is below 12."
So when we talk about money, when we talk about money being not an issue, I agree, but what would you put the monies, would you put the monies towards the teachers, or would you put the monies towards programs after school? I mean, how would you use the monies if you're saying that money is an issue? How would you use the monies that you need?
Well, first of all, our teachers are 48th in pay, so that is a problem, but...
Well, I'm not talking about the teachers, okay? I mean, I don't think the teachers, I think that monies need to go towards programs.
I began by saying we have to reduce class size, we have to extend the year, we have one of the shortest years around. The Japanese go 235 days, and we think that we compete with that. We need to have preschool, as everybody seems to be agreed with. We need to have, special needs help is vital to deal with these kids and find out about it. Do our teachers necessarily need more money? I won't disturb my friend here or my wife, but, you know, that's, that can be a problem. But those other things, those four things that I mentioned, those are key, and if we don't do them, we're gonna be back here having another discussion a decade from now.
Okay, Janay, if you would do me a favor and go back behind David Jackson, you've got Troy Donaldson. Troy, a student from Beaumont High School three years ago, tell us about your experience there, Troy.
Okay. Well, at Beaumont, it was a great experience for me. I know that we had, I had a two, a double-fold experience growing up. I grew up in Florida, and so I went to better schools. We had resources, the teachers were engaged, they were motivated, they did whatever it took to reach the students. What I found out here was, when I came here, was that a lot of teachers, and we can't play the blame game on this, or like one of our brothers here said, the silver bullet theory, it's not gonna work either, but what I think is it's a cumulative effort that we have to have with our community to work together and make something happen. When you have one school without books to have homework and to study and to build these skills that lead you on to go to higher education, you know, that can definitely affect a student. Whereas you have certain schools that are getting, you know, iPads, they're giving out iPads to the students. It's like a slap in the inner-city student's face, "Hey, I can't even get a book to take home so that I can read this subject if it's interesting to me." So I think that that's something that might be important.
Thank you, Troy. Let me come back here for a little bit. First of all, Jim, you're hearing a lot of stuff here tonight.
Well, all these are all excellent points, and you should be congratulating on putting this show together, Mark. One thing we do overlook a little bit, and we can't do anything about this, is the macro problem that 500 years ago was a privilege to have an ed, less than 1% of anybody had an education at all, except maybe priests. Now we've moved in a direction with the growth of capitalism and the Western civilization to a point where everybody's expected to be educated. The three largest employers in the United States today are, anybody wanna guess? Walmart, McDonald's, and Taco Bell. And we're undergoing what's known in economics as creative destruction, where we've become so successful and our technology has outplayed everything that most of us don't have to do a whole lot anymore. And there's gonna be a lot of competition for jobs that really don't have much meaning for the, at least for the college graduate, and certainly for a lot of high school graduates. This has happened to us now intuitively, and we're arguing, you know, micro things, which we have to do 'cause we only have one life to live in this.
So how do you get that meaning into the schools?
The way you have to do it is the, the President is working at it right now. He is, he's probably the most effective President we've ever had as far as engaging a political economic philosophy that was, you know, that's been understood for 50, 60, 70 years, and transitioning us into that new, into that new era. It's gonna be difficult, and along the way, a lot of things are gonna rub.
So Louis, let me ask you the same thing. How do you get meaning into the school? Not all this other junk, meaning, something that means something to kids.
I think we're, I think we're doing some of it now, right? But I also think it goes back to our opening discussion when we talked about the data collection piece, and I think we need to remember what Tim said when he talked about the in-school and out-of-school. So I think we need to collect that data across all points to understand, you know, exactly what's happening to these kids. I think we need to begin to target some solutions based on what we find, and we don't know what that is. We know, we know some of the more, you know, some of the broader things that we can do to address those things right now, and that's preschool and some of those things. But I think it's still yet to be seen. I know that, you know, obviously poverty plays a major role in it, crime plays a major role in it, single-parent households play a major role in it. And if you look at the class that's most disenfranchised, and you named it a little bit earlier today, and the communities they're coming from, those things will be prevalent throughout that community. So we know that we have to begin to address those things and make a substantive change.
Tim.
I'll be real quick, I think Carl really summed it up. We are really racing to the bottom of this country. This state is on a precipitous fall in terms of spending on education, and realistically, we're not gonna address any of these problems that we have if we don't find the necessary resources to get them done. So people need to understand, we gotta work together, we gotta support the program she's talked about, we gotta support a lot of things, but if we're not spending any money, if we're eliminating the revenue to do it, we're not gonna fix anything.
So Jamila, how can we get resources to those kids who need those resources?
Well, the first resource I think every child needs is love, okay? They need tender love and care, and I can say it over and over again. Poverty is an issue, and it's a, I don't, I went to India three years ago, okay? And we're talking poverty, I mean, you're talking massive poverty. But guess what? They were eager to learn. We have to re-instill in our kids the importance of learning and being able to have a quality education that can take them to the next level. Because all of our children, they want the finer things in life. I mean, we have a capitalist society and a socialist society that tells them that they should have Prada, they should have Gucci, they should have Fendi, they see all the rappers, they see those things. And if we can instill in them that education can take them there.
Okay, and if I don't get out of here, we're not gonna have any of those things. So let's go. But I do wanna thank you, first of all, Janay, very much for running back and forth for 104.1 and 95.5. Thank you very much, Janay. And thank you, everybody, for being here.
Thanks for having us.
And Richard, I hope you're okay. But thank you too, and everybody for being here tonight. It was wonderful, and we'll see you again. Good night.